Good morning guys and welcome back to another vlog. So today is Marley's day off, so we're not doing an awful lot today. But I thought I'd record our session because we're going to do a little bit of work on our groundwork. And as you can see by my little friend hanging on my wrist, we are going to be doing a little bit of clicker training today. So I've not actually done clicker training with him for a little while. We've been doing bits and pieces, but not like an actual specialised session on clicker training. But for all of his days off, I've actually allocated them as days off slash groundwork days. So that if I do want to or have time, I can do a bit of groundwork with him, just to make sure that we're reintroducing that and keeping up on that as well. So today we're going to go into the arena and just kind of touch up on things that he has already been doing. So his food manners, just generally asking him to move away, back up, all those little bits that we weren't doing already. I'm also going to just touch on something that I was teaching him before. So we were doing some work on target and getting him to target my hand. And hopefully we're going to just develop that a little bit and start getting him to learn to kiss as well. Because I was teaching him kiss, but I kind of stopped. And I'm not sure how kiss is going to go because he's going through a very bitey, teething, nibbly stage. So I could lose my mouth, I could lose my nose, but we're going to see how it goes. So I've got a pocket full of treats here and I've just got your standard like fibre nuggets. So these are like my general everyday blah blah treats. And then you've got your high reward treat. So today we're using parsnips. I have got a bunch of treats in my cupboard at the minute that I could use, but I thought parsnips are going to be easier because they're longer. I can make sure that my hands aren't getting in the way, especially for doing things like hand target and kiss. I'm also going to do a little bit of work on smile. We had started learning smile. I just want to see kind of where he is with it because it is a bit more complicated. And he's just, like I said, he's very grabby at the minute. So I think now while he's using his mouth a bit more and being a bit more like curious and explorative with it, I think now would be a good time to like start introducing smile. Because he is like lifting his mouth a bit more, trying to grab things. So we'll see how that goes. So that is the general plan for today. Hand target, well, recapping old things, hand target, smile and or kiss. So I'm going to go and grab him, head into the school and get started. So as I mentioned, we've not been doing a whole lot of groundwork. In fact, we've not really been doing any groundwork. And we have started doing some stretches. So I just did like a little bit of flex and stretches, asking him to stretch left and right. And then stretching down, which we do pretty much every day he does any exercise. So we do that, but other than that, no real groundwork is being done at the moment. So it is a very fresh recap. He's not done anything for months. So first thing I wag on is asking him to go back. And because we've been doing quite a bit of lunging at the minute, he sees I've got whip in my hand and he seems to have been lunged. So here you see him just walking away to go out onto a circle, which isn't what I want. So I'm asking him to stop and just ask a question again. He's misunderstood what I want. So I ask a question again. And this time he does the right response and starts backing up a little bit. So I just give him a little click and a reward. So I do the same thing again. I hold the whip in front of him, take a few steps towards him. So I'm not actually touching him with the whip at all. It's literally just in front of his chest. But he senses that it's there and just moves away from the pressure and then again from me stepping towards him. Now usually when we ask him to go back or when I've asked him to go back, it's not been as successful as this at all. In fact, I think I'm really presently surprised by how well he picked up on this. Because normally when I ask him to go back, I've literally been like pushing into his chest and he will not move. So the fact that he is like reversing so efficiently just because of the stick in front of him is a massive surprise. So the first few times he wasn't really going quite straight enough. He's kind of turning a little bit. So I was doing it a few more times, just to make sure he's properly reversing straight back, not squiggly, not waving anywhere and not trying to turn or bend. So I want him to reverse straight back. Once he starts picking it up, I then change into my position. So now I'm, as you can see, I'm stood at the side of him rather than in front of him. He wasn't quite sure to begin with, but eventually he does understand and reverse normally as well, which is great. Which is really handy because I'm not always going to be directly in front of him when I ask him to move back. I'm more likely going to be stood next to him. So it's really good to get him to understand what I want him to do when I stood at different points in his body. So doing the same thing again. I'm stood at the side, still walking towards him, with the stick just in front of his chest. And this time, ask him to go a little bit further back than before. So instead of a few steps, he's doing quite a few steps now. And backwards, which was really, really good. So click, reward and give him a treat. Marley's the best at doing things at the most unfortunate times. So here we have my little scratch, just waiting. And we're backing up again. So this time, not only am I at his side, I'm also now facing the same direction as him and I'm walking backwards. Which is absolutely amazing. So now he's actually backing up with me, which is great. So I've still got the stick in front of him, but he's now pretty much going off my body language as well and walking backwards, which is really, really good. That was really good for him. So that's a definite high reward treat. I've probably given him a bit of parsnip there as well as the clicker. Because that was absolutely super. Because he's doing so well, I tend to give him little breaks, but he's done something really good. So I kind of change up what we're doing. So here we're going to do a little bit of a recap on things we've already done. So just spinning the rope around him. Ever since he hurt his eye, he's been quite head shy. So I've gone to do a little bit of this and just kind of see what his reaction would be actually. Because it's just good to kind of gaze these things and just test him a little bit. And as you can see, he's completely fine. In fact, I was doing it this side, he tries to go and sniff the rope and almost got hit in the face. So he's completely not phased by this at all. And I was then going to do the one where you spin it around his head, but I realised I'm not using my horsemanship rope. I'm just using a standard lung line, standard lead rope, sorry, which is considerably shorter. So it didn't really work. Now, as you can see, it kind of got a bit tangled around his head and his ear and he again wasn't bothered in the side test. So here he's being really focused and attentive. He's kind of waiting to see what I'm going to ask of him next. He's making sure he's near me, just in case a treat happens to pop out of my pocket and a clicker happens to go off. Very sneaky little three around this one. But compared to a lot of our other groundwork sessions, he has a lot more focused on me. He's kind of waiting for me to give him an instruction or ask something, which is really good. Normally at this point, he gets a bit bored, he wanders off. I've actually put the rope over his neck at this point and normally again, once I've let him go, he kind of walks off. But here I've picked up the whip and just to get ready to do the next bit of groundwork. And he assumes we're lunging. And thinks we're lunging, so he takes himself out and tries to go onto a circle, which is really, really good. A really good sign for him if he wants to do some free lunging in the future, to know that he'll actually stay with me on a circle. Normally, like I said, he would just wander off. Once he's loose, he says goodbye. But here he actually comes over, stands and waits for what I'm going to ask him to do next. He actually brings himself towards me, which is really nice. So we do a quick recap on turning the hindquarters away, which is something we did right at the beginning. Probably one of the first things we did and learned together in our groundwork sessions, which he has picked up very quickly and remembered very quickly. One thing he's not doing quite as well is he's not controlling his forequarters or his front legs much. So what you should see is that he's moving just his hind end and his front leg shouldn't be moving as much at all. So I'd love to do it again, just to make sure he keeps his front leg still. He's still kind of moving his front leg, so not quite what we want. He thinks we're doing back, so he's still just going backwards. So again, you just keep asking the same question until you get the right response. So we're going to stop, give him a break and then try again. And hopefully this time he understands I want him to move around, not go backwards. Perfect. Okay, Andy's got it. So really good. So especially with, I mean, most horses are the same anyway, but especially with young horses, if you ask them something and you get the wrong response, it's really important not to tell them off. Because they're just misunderstanding the question. He's not being naughty. So what I tend to do is just give him a break to think about it, ask him again and then wait for the right response. I find it's more beneficial to reward the right response than to punish the wrong. Because I don't always know what they've done wrong, but if you tell them they've done something right, they can always link that they've done something right rather than done something wrong. Again, he's got it in his head that I want him to go back, so he's reversing every now and then. So I just stop, ask him again and eventually he understands what I want him to do. Click and reward. So of all my groundwork sessions, this is probably by far the best he's ever been. He's just so focused on what I want him to do. He's really perceptive. He's just really, really listening. I'm really happy with him today actually. It's a really good groundwork session. Now before that's just doing back up and making sure that we're doing it from different positions. So I'm sitting in front of him, next to him, facing him, not facing him. And we're literally going for little walks and every now and then I'll ask him to back up and just make sure that he's still understanding and really perceptive. And by throwing it in randomly like this, so by going for a walk and then randomly just stopping and asking to go back. Just means that he's really listening to my aids. He's really waiting for what I'm going to ask him to do next. So there we've got a back even before I started moving. He sensed that I had the whip up and I was going to reverse and he did. So here he's actually being extremely clever and he is asking to do, well, I don't say asking to stretch, but he's offering me a stretch. He's got to that stage where he knows that he gets treats for certain things. So he'll just start doing them, expecting a treat. So that's one of the stretches we do where he goes between his legs. So now I'm just going to do some of his stretches. So let's do this, I kind of make sure that he's as free as he can be. So I put the rope over his neck. And first off, we're going to do is just stretching to the side. So I ask him to follow a treat as far back as he can. He's actually really flexible at the moment. He's really good at these ones. But every now and then he just gets a little bit lazy and he won't quite go as far back as I want him to. So I'm really trying to encourage him to make sure he's giving it his all and not giving up halfway. So here I'm not letting him give up. He thinks he's done enough. He thinks I've touched the treat, so I must have been scared by now, but no. There we go. So a little bit more encouragement. Just get him as far back as he can. Now we do do these in an order. So always go left and then right and then in between. So as soon as he's finished his treat from the first stretch, he goes straight away to his left because he knows what's coming next. And he's actually getting really, really good at going down. One thing he does do is he tends to come to the side too quickly to get the treat. So I always have to make sure that we kind of reset the whole situation. I tend to put my hands behind my back just to signify that we were done and we're finished. And if he is getting really grabby, then we go back to food manners. So I'll hold my fist out and I'm going to move his head away before he gets his treat. Like most horses, he's an absolute cheater and tries to come to the side to get the treat, which doesn't work. So here I'm resetting, putting my hands behind my back so he knows that we're finished. And once the hand is behind my back, he kind of stops being naughty and resets and waits. Until I give him his next command. Okay. So I tend to use hands behind my back kind of as an all done signify. I usually say all done when I do it as well, so he knows that we're finished. And that's normally when he's getting too grabby or if he's preempting my next move too much. Because he is very clever and because things are done mainly in a routine, he tends to assume he knows what they're asking next. And obviously when you assume, you make an ass of you and me. So if he is getting too presumptuous and too ahead of me, then I would just reset, answer how my back, all done and just ask him to stop. Now because he was so, so, so focused on me, I decided to do a little bit of work and see what he would do if I wasn't holding on to him. So here I'm just walking away and he's following me, which again is really good. As I said, normally he would be off. There is a little poo bin in the corner of the school like most schools have and he is obsessed with it. Anytime he's free in the school, he'll be over in that corner sniffing the poo because he's an absolute weirdo. So because he was following me so well, I decided to try going back. And would you know it guys, he did so well. So you'll notice I've not even got the whip on me at all. There's nothing in front of him. He's literally doing this just off my body language. What you can't see is that I'm holding my hand closest to him up and I'm just like waving my finger back and forth as if to signify pointing back. And that's how I want him to go back without the stick. And I think the fact that he's picking up on that really tiny, tiny aid is absolutely incredible. Like I've said it so many times, but I'm so impressed with how he was in this session because he's never been this like, this perceptive and this focused at all on groundwork. He's usually so distracted. I mean, I definitely think that having the time away has done in the wild of good because he's come back so much better. He's listening a lot better. Yes, he's a hundred percent cheekier, but I think that's also happened with Welsh. But he is really listening. And I would like to just apologise for the display of manhood here because Marley was extremely relaxed in this session and well. So again, he's going for some little walks, asking him to follow me and he's doing really well. Just changing the rein, seeing if he's still listening. Got a bit distracted there, but he came back. And then he lands up next to me really nicely. Which I must say, as I was doing this, I think it's really handy for when I want to like get on. If I could get him to line up next to me by the block, that'd be just perfection. And this in itself, just like lining up with his head towards me is really good. Because normally, obviously Marley's key move is just to reverse the bobbing to me, if he wants my attention. So the fact that he's lining up to me towards his whiffle is really, really good. Food manners, treat. And that's him done. Right, I really hope you like a recorder something like that. That was really good. Yeah, he's remembered a lot, which is great. And he's very quickly picked up back, which is something we couldn't do. It's really interesting to see that he understands back when I have the whip, but not when I don't. But actually we did a little bit of work towards the end where he was just kind of following me, picking up my cues. And yeah, we got back with me there and he was a lot more with me than he's ever been when we've been doing groundwork. Usually he like wanders off if I let him off. But today he was really with me and together, which is good. He's listening a bit more, but we're going to head out now because someone's coming to ride. Oh yeah, he's very happy with that. And because he's being so grabby, I decided against doing things like hand target and smile. Just because I wanted to start learning to take food from my hand without manners. And obviously doing hand target's got to take a strike from my hand. And so I decided not to do that, just to kind of keep a boundary between him not being so bitey and nibbly. But what we did do was good. Very good. Okay, good boy. I'm going to take him in now and give him a proper little pamper and a bit of groom. And have a look at his eye actually, because he's looking a lot better. So ever since Marley hurt his eye, sadly he has become quite head shy. And he was a little bit head shy before, nothing too dramatic, just obviously like pulling away sometimes, you weren't sure. But since I've had to be cleaning his eye, creaming his eye, putting fly masks on him, ever since then, he's just been an absolute nightmare. Especially for fly veils, fly hoods, whatever you guys call them, ears, I've heard them called. And which isn't great for me on account of my little collection here. So I did a bit of work today on just generally handling his ears, but I'm also going to bring this along with me. If he lets me, I will just try and put it on slowly. I'm kind of trying to figure out different ways. I've noticed that if I come to him from the left, just the side that his bad eyes on, that's when he kind of goes into panic mode and assumes sometimes I'm horrible to him. And then completely freaks out. So I'm going to just try and just work on him from the right, see if just doing it different ways helps. Last time I rode, I used a fly veil and I found that if I put it on when I stood in front of him, he was completely fine. But it did take me 10 minutes of just trying to put it on normally to even get to that point. So we're going to do a bit of work on that now. I'm going to grab some more treats, going to do some clicker training just to reassure him and do some positive reinforcement to encourage him to bring his head down. And my main aim is to teach him that when I'm touching his ears, to bring his head down. So whenever he brings his head down, I would click him, reward. He pulls his head up, I won't do anything. What I don't want to do is make him even more head shy and make it even more negative. So I'm not going to do anything horrifically nasty. I'm not going to tell him off in any way or try to. Things I have noticed during positive reinforcement is my reflex is to, I don't want to say punish because it sounds awful, but yeah, punish. If something, if he's being naughty, my reflex is to tell him off and make him stop. And which is negative reinforcement and obviously not what I want to do. So I'm trying to do more ignoring the bad, rewarding the good. So hopefully I can channel that throughout this little session here. But yeah, that's my main aim is to eventually get him to be bringing his head down while handling his ears, which will help me in the future, putting like things like ears on, putting his brays on and such. And hopefully just getting to relax a bit more as well when I'm near his ears. So we're going to go and do that. And he is better at the moment because I'm not treating his eye anymore. I haven't got to. So since I've stopped having to treat his eye, he's been absolutely amazing. And it's just every now and then little things like changing his head collar over or putting fly veils on, he just had a little bit of a meltdown. But I think I'm going to have to start creaming again. So I'm also going to do a little bit of work, just getting him to let me touch his eye. Because I'm not sure if it's going to heal without a scar on its eye. And so I might start using some kind of wound cream on it or like manuka honey, just to kind of encourage it to heal it better. I might not, but it's also handy just to get him used to me touching it again, just in case I need to. So going to grab some treats, I'm going to head over and we'll see how this goes, fingers crossed. Because him being head shy is a massive stress for me at the minute. So as I mentioned earlier, Marley has a ridiculous amount of treats, like way, we're waiting for any treats. So I'm going to change up the treats that I'm using for this little bit now, just so he doesn't get bored. So I've actually got a little treat pot here, a little selection, and I will run through what's in those. So in this box we have a range of different treats. It is mainly lick it snacks, which Marley absolutely adores. I thought there'd be a good like little handy snack to have, because you can have quite a few of those and not really have any like major issues. And they're quite small, so that'd be good just to give him a little handful of. But we've also got some crunchets, these lovely little blocks here. And what looks like chocolate, I agree, isn't chocolate. It's actually horsey chocolate from his advent calendar. So this is what was left of his crunchets and his horsey advent calendar, because obviously I wasn't here over Christmas. And he had loads of squares and I opened, so I decided to chuck them all in here. So this is like his treat assortment. So whenever I need just like a random treat, I'll grab this out and I thought we've got. So that is like my low reward treat, my kind of basic, oh whatever kind of treat. I mainly use the lick it snacks just because they're the same. And when you do two different kinds of treats, you want your high reward and your low reward to be different, like quite different. And if he's having a lick it snacks and then crunch it and then chocolate and then his high reward treat, like he won't really know what the high reward treat is, if that makes sense. So I've been using mainly the snacks, but if an odd bit of chocolate gets in there in my handful, then it doesn't really matter. And I'm also going to change up his high reward treats. So I'm actually now going to use these. And these are some handmade treats that my friend actually makes, a colleague from WAC, and he loves them. These are definitely Marley's like hands down favourite treats. So we're going to use these today, just as his high reward treat. I'm not bringing too many because I'm not expecting him to do anything to earn a high reward treat at the moment. So that would be for example, doing what I want him to do straight away or allowing me to touch his ears straight away. I'm not expecting that much progress. So I'm not bringing too many high reward treats. By I'm bringing some just in case we do have the off moment and on the off chance that he does do something spectacular almost straight away. So that's what I'm using for now. So we're going to head out. So I've got one of my older fly veils, because last time we did this, obviously when I went on my ride the other day, he threw his head and threw my fly veil to the ground. And it was my ink blue. I hadn't even used it yet and he just threw it in the mud and my heart broke. So we're using an older one in case he does throw a tantrum and it gets dirty and then I won't mind so much. So we've got my high reward treat, which are these lovely handmade molasses bar things. And then the assortment that I need to get through. Now the good news is Marley likes treats. So anytime there's a treat involved, he will be a little bit more perceptive and impressionable. So we're going to start off with just giving him a treat. Right, these are small ones. You can get a hand compared to it. There we go. Right, you can't be like that. He also gets very grabby once he's got food, which is going to be painful. Right, it's giving his breakfast. Here you go, your chicken. Good boy. Thanks. I'm tired himself. There you are. Tie you back up, trying to escape. So as suspected, not a great deal of progress. And you can kind of see a little bit how he reacts as well, like he is really, really not okay with me being near his head at the moment. Which yeah, is a massive shame because he was, yeah, it's just a really hard thing to overcome, especially when it's so in the head like that. And there's a lot going on in the yard as well. So he wasn't really concentrating and his whole like concentration was on me and the treats and when they were coming next. He wasn't really focusing on why he was getting them. So it wasn't like the most beneficial session. And what I did do is, well, he did have one moment where he did bring his head right down. So I just rewarded, treated that and kind of ended it there because I didn't think I was going to get anything better than that. And I think what I'll do next time is do that in the school, because then he could focus more. He's so focused on me in the school earlier. So I think he'll be a bit more focused in the school this time. And he won't be tied up, so he'll have a bit more freedom. So I'll know that obviously I'm not worried about him putting away from his fans and he's there by choice. I think it would just give him a bit more... I think it will just give him a bit more space to just concentrate and focus on me as well. So that's kind of my aim next time to do in school. But it would start with what I wanted, so hopefully we can do a bit more on that. I'll try and do a bit every day or every other day. And eventually, fingers crossed, we'll overcome this. So while Marley's eating, I'm just going to move some bits and pieces around, have a bit of tidying up. And you're probably thinking, we have tools. Why do I have tools? Well, that is part of my grand news. Marley will be stabled for next month and I've honestly never been more excited in my lifetime. So I've just come up to our stable to be now, just to have a look at basically how much room and space I've got so I know what I need to get, et cetera, et cetera. All the boring admin stuff and the preparing to have a stable, which is not stressful at all. Let me flip the camera around and show you guys around a bit. So this is where our stable is, is this one here. These are the isolation stables, but they're currently not being used as isolation stables. So this is Marley's, or Marley's stable to be. As you can see, it's a little bit dreary and blah. But the good news is, because I know my minds have been moving in the first of February and the old liveries have already left, I've got time, I can give it a real good clean out. So I'm going to have a massive, massive clear out. I'm going to get rid of all cobwebs. I'm going to pull all the matting out, clear out underneath there and put them back down. So yeah, massive, massive clear out, so I cannot wait to get that in. I absolutely love cleaning. I don't know why I'm such a weirdo, but I just love cleaning stables, not even like my house. My room's a mess, but my stable, pristine. So I'm feeling especially lucky because we are in what would have been or was the isolation stables. We've actually got all this room to ourselves, obviously they're lovely though. So another livery will eventually come up here. But for now, it is mine, all mine. I mean, in a perfect world, I've got a Pippin stable and a Marley stable, but obviously Pip's online, so not planning on bringing her home anytime soon. She is happy, her owner's happy, so she'll stay up there. But either of us has her, so she can come home. I would absolutely love to see a little Pippin head there and a little Marley head there. It would actually be like a dream country to have them back together. So Marley's actually going to be going from grass livery onto DIY livery, which not only means that he'll be in a stable, but it means that everything Marley related on the yard is going to come down to me. So I'm going to be in charge of organising his bedding, his hay, his feed, everything. So what I will be doing in the future is a nice little video about what you need for your horse when they go on to DIY, where I'll tell you guys everything that I've got for him. Obviously he's going from grass to DIY, so I do need absolutely everything, tools, wheelbo. I have nothing, so it will be a really good video for anyone who's thinking of going on to DIY or getting their own horse with first time on DIY, to let you guys know what you'll need in order to do that. I'll also go through the bedding that I'm using with him and why. I've got changed his feed or if I change his feed, which speeds I'll be going on to and why. So it'll be a really good informative video if anyone wants to know. And of course, you can keep up with Marley's journey as he goes from a grass livery to a real stabled horse. I'm going to leave this video here now, guys, so thank you so much for watching. Please like and subscribe so you get a notification every time I post a new video. And I'll see you guys next time. So the day after I made that video, Tyson came into the stable that is to be mine, meaning there is a bed now. Meaning I can't put all the bedding up and all the matting up and clean it like I was planning to, like I said yesterday. So you better be out of here in the next few days, pal, because I've got some cleaning to do.